Good evening. We call to order this called meeting of the Bristol, Virginia City Council today, Thursday, April 7th, 2022. Please join us for a moment of silence. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance, two to the flag of the United States of America and two to the Republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming tonight. We just have one item on our agenda, and we need to adopt our agenda. What's the pleasure of the council?
I move for the adoption of the agenda as presented.
Second.
A motion and a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Hartley.
Yes.
Knave.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Item one of our agenda is the presentation of the proposed budget for fiscal year 2023, staff report.
First, I want to thank everyone that has been a part of this budget process to help us develop it. That goes from members of council down to department heads and individual employees who have played a role throughout this entire spring to help us get to a balanced budget this year. I want to thank Tamara Spradlin and all her hard work and her team for what they do to help us develop this budget. And then in front of you, you've just received the budget book that has been prepared by Cameron Phillips, and I appreciate his hard work and effort to make sure that you all have a budget book, not only for the recommended budget, but for the final budget that will be adopted later this year. He does a tremendous job getting those together for us. The budget is now posted online. It was posted online right at 6:00 PM, so it's available for people to look at as well. So tonight, we'll discuss my recommendations for fiscal year 23 budget, but first, let's talk about some highlights of 2022. We are still dealing with COVID-19 and the impacts from COVID-19 and how that impacted our city in 2020 and 2021. Amazon opened this past year, as we all know, which is good for the city. They are seem to be busy and have a tremendous amount of employees, see a lot of Amazon Prime trucks throughout the city and throughout the county on a daily basis. The casino, as we all know, is continuing to make progress. It was just announced last week that opening day will be July 8th of 2022, and with that has been a long project. I remember where I was at when this project broke. I actually happened to be in Las Vegas on vacation when the story broke that there was going to be a casino at the former Bristol Mall. So this has been a four-year process to get this project here. These types of projects don't happen overnight, and this is a perfect example for each of you all to see how long an economic development project of this magnitude takes. It's not something that happens overnight. You don't snap your fingers, and all of a sudden, you have a $350 million project in your backyard. This is four years of hard work from people all across the state of Virginia to make sure that we have casino gaming, not only here in Bristol, but in four other localities across the Commonwealth as well. This past year, we did receive some ARPA relief money, approximately $10.1 million. The vast majority of those funds will be dedicated to the landfill, and there are other places that we will be using that money as well. Texas Roadhouse opened at the Falls this past year, and it has been busy. Every time you drive up there, it doesn't matter what day of the week or what time you go, that parking lot is packed. Some may consider a landfill a low light of 2022. It's a highlight. It's a highlight simply because of the amount of time and effort that that landfill has taken, not only from me, but from other staff and departments across the city as well, to make sure that we're doing everything that we can to mitigate the odor impact across the city. So what were my budget objectives for this year? Number one was to fund Solid Waste Disposal Fund appropriately to address ongoing issues. I don't think there's anyone in this room that doesn't believe that the landfill is the number one priority for this city, to make sure we correct the landfill issues so that our citizens do not have to deal with the landfill odor that has been plaguing them since December of '20. Two, recruit and retain police and fire personnel. We have seen all across the country, especially within police departments, police officers are resigning at a rapid pace and moving on to other careers where their lives are not as endangered as they are in line of police work. And in order to keep police and fire personnel, we had to make some salary adjustments so that we can recruit and retain the best employees possible. Next was to address capital needs throughout the city, maintain essential services, and continue to fund essential line items. And finally, funding for the Bristol, Virginia Public School System. Here's our budget challenges. The landfill. We all know the landfill is going to be expensive to correct over the next several years, but it has to be one of our top priorities, but it's also a budget challenge for our city, and it's something that we need to be cognizant of as we continue to move forward. We do not have unlimited funds to make corrections immediately. We have to be very precise in what we do and how we do it to make sure that we're not wasting taxpayer dollars as we move forward, and to make sure that whatever we do out there is going to be a solution that works, and it's not just some theory that may or may not work. We don't have, we don't, we're not afforded that luxury. We have to make sure that what we do is going to work, and it may take a little bit longer than what people want, but it's something that we have to do because we are stewards of the taxpayer money. Next, increasing debt payments. Since I've been on board in 2017, we've always talked about the increasing debt payments that are associated with the Falls and our landfill, and now we are beginning those increasing debt payments, as we have talked about. The good thing is, we've had a plan to deal with those increasing debt payments, so it doesn't have too much of an impact on our budget, but it's something that we have to be aware of as we continue to move forward, not only in 2023, but in years moving forward. We had modest revenue growth over the past year. Now, when you, when I say modest revenue growth, what I'm looking at is not what we budgeted, because when you look at our restaurant meals tax and lodging tax, they're doing very well as compared to how we budgeted, but when you look back prior to COVID-19, it's just modest revenue growth as to what it was. Next, our regional jail. We knew that going into the regional jail was going to cost the city some money, and that is a budget challenge, but we have prepared for that and are ready to move forward with the regional jail transition. Next, the school funding. We knew that required local effort was going to increase based on state requirements, and as we continue to look forward, on Tuesday night, you all will be voting on a resolution to approve school funding, and we know that as we move forward, that school funding is going to cost the city additional funds in 2024, 2025. And the next challenge is, is something we've talked about every year I've been here, is making sure that we fund citywide maintenance. So the general fund is a $59.8 million budget. Community Development Block grant, $558,000. Solid Waste Disposal Fund, $7.7 million. Locally funded capital projects, $630,000. State and federal funded capital projects, $7.3 million. The Commonwealth Attorney's Federal Revenue Sharing Fund, $95,000. Transit Fund, $686,000. Asset Forfeiture Fund, $150,000. And the COVID-19 Federal Funds Fund is right at $10 million, which is the ARPA funds. Total city budget of $87 million. The school budget is $51.9 million for a draft appropriation order budget of $139 General Fund revenues. Local revenue is $41.8 million. That's an increase of $6.7 million. State revenue, a 14 million, decrease of $1.4 million. Federal revenue of $3.7 million, which is a decrease of $300,000. Total, $59,844,363 for an increase for general fund revenues of $4.9 million. Here is Ms. Spradlin's favorite slide. This shows where our money comes from. She loves to see the blue piece of the pie chart as big as possible, and that is 70% local fund, local funding. The red is from the Commonwealth of Virginia at 24%, and the federal government provides 6% of our revenues. So let's talk about revenue changes that were greater than $10,000 for this upcoming year. The increase in beginning fund balance of $3.8 million, we'll go into some detail with that in a few slides from here. Increase in personal property tax of $358,150. There is no tax increase there, even though there is an increase in property tax revenue that's being generated, and that is based upon the personal properties evaluation from the commissioner revenue and the values of those properties with our tax rates, but there is no tax increase, no tax rate increase. Other local taxes increased by $2.6 million. Fines increased by $18,000. Revenues from the use of money decreased by $109,000, and that is mainly because of the interest rates that we lost when we had to switch banks this past year. Revenues from the use of property down $29,000. Court costs down $68,000. Clear Creek Golf Club, increase of general fund revenue of $24,000. Charges for the jail decreased by $13,200. That is part of the holiday funding that the jail had every year, and if we're transitioning away from the jail, that would not be part of our revenue line items anymore. Recovered costs of $84,600. State revenue decreased by $1.4 million. This is primarily from the sheriff comp board decrease. As we transition to the regional jail, we will have less comp board members from the, at the sheriff's department. And then a federal revenue decrease of $300,206, and that's primarily your ARPA funds moving to Fund 35. So the beginning fund balance details, $300,000 of that is the Commonwealth Opportunity Fund. That is from the American Merchant Funds that we received back in November of 17, or December of 17, when American Merchant opened. Once they reach certain parameters, we can send that money to American Merchant. Local capital projects funding, $569,500. The jail transition cost of $1.449 million, and the solid waste disposal fund transfer of $1 million for a total of $3.318 million for our beginning fund balance. So you can see where some of those costs are coming from, from our ARPA funds will be part of the jail transitional costs and the solid waste disposal fund. Other local tax highlights, local sales and use tax increase of $550,000. Our business license taxes increased by $170,000. Bank stock taxes decreased by $70,000. Cigarette taxes decreased by $35,000. Lodging tax increased by $600,000. Restaurant meals tax increased by $1.1 million. Admissions tax increased by $33,500. Local sales and use tax and DRI, that's Phase 1 of the Falls, an increase of $25,000. Restaurant meals tax in Phase 1 of the Falls increased by $191,000, and local sales and use tax in Phases 2 and 3 increased by $46,000. General fund expenditures, total increase of $4.958 million from 2122 original budget. You can see, as we move through our functions of government here, we have government administration increased by $493,000, an increase of 16.21%. Judicial administration decreased by $144,000. Public safety decreased by $436,000. Public works was an increase of $198,000. Health, welfare, and social services, an increase of $813,000. Education, an increase of $784,000. Parks, rec, and culture, an increase of $375,000. Community development, an increase of $496,000. Nondepartmental, an increase of $31,946. Our debt, $41,943 increase, and then transfers were $2.3 million. And this is how we spend our money, based on a percentage basis. Public safety is at 27.65%. Health, welfare, and social services at 16.3%. Education at 12.7%. Public works at 10.13%. Transfers, little over 8%. Debt, little over 7%. Government administration, 5.92%. Parks, rec, and culture, 5.15%. Judicial administration, little, right at 2%, I'm sorry, 2.35%. And community development, I'm sorry, judicial administration at 3.05%, community development at 2.35%, and nondepartmental at 1.54%. And it's always neat to see throughout the years, we give our financially quarterly updates, we track right along with these projections of how we spend our money, and you can see that as we continue to track each of those every quarter, it falls right in line with what we project at the beginning of the year. So what were some of our biggest changes for this year's budget? That's salary and benefits. Now, your salary increase here of 5% across the board for all employees, that is in line with what the Commonwealth of Virginia is recommending in the state, and we have checked with numerous localities across the state. Most localities are doing at least 5%. We even have heard of localities going as high as 7% this past year, but I'm recommending the 5% raise for all employees across the board. And you can see, that's $1.3 million, but that also includes restored positions that were restored in fiscal year 22. I have a list of those coming up shortly, and then a couple of new positions as well. Salary decrease of $1.6 million. This is due to the Sheriff's Office, JASP, the Judicial Alternative Sentencing Program, and Office on Youth. If you recall, Office on Youth was transferred over to the school board. At some point last year, they now take care of the Office on Youth. I'm recommending that we eliminate the Judicial Alternative Sentencing Program. Some of you all were here in 2018 when that program first came online. The original intent of JASP was to help alleviate overcrowding at our jail, to help us with some of the jail costs where we were sending inmates to our regional jail. We are now going to the regional jail, and the net local funding of JASP was roughly $243,000. If we're going to the regional jail and we do not have the numbers of inmates in that program to make it break even, I could not in good faith recommend that we continue with that program. I have talked to Judge Johnson in regards to this program. He would prefer that we continue the program for at least another year during the jail transition. However, my recommendation is to eliminate that program. And then the vast majority of that $1.6 million is the fact that we will be losing a lot of comp board funded positions from the sheriff's office. An overtime increase of $40,000. Benefits increase of $726,000. Benefit decrease, once again, that's your sheriff, JASP, and Office on Youth of $819,000, and a total salary and benefit changes of $349,000. This is all in Fund 1, and so you can see that there is a change. However, you will see a different number on salary increase here shortly, and I'll show that to you and explain it in just a moment. Increase is greater than $10,000 from the fiscal year 22 original budget. Treasurer tax sales fees of $28,500. Bank service charges with treasurer of $78,000. Maintenance and computer software for information technology, an increase of $20,862. Operating supplies and materials, increase of $18,649. General District Court, materials building and property, increase of $14,000. 28th Judicial Circuit Court Clerk, materials building and property, a $14,000 increase. 28th Judicial Circuit Court Clerk, record preservation grant of $18,12. Police, other equipment, tasers, cameras, radars, dispatch equipment, $58,941. We've also included a half a million dollars for transportation costs to the Southwest Virginia Regional Jail for police. The Southwest Virginia Regional Jail Authority, from the general fund, the payment is $1.8 million for fiscal year 23. Streets and Engineering, paving not covered by the state, $15,000. VDOT reimbursed maintenance, bucket truck purchase, $100,000. VDOT reimbursed maintenance, skid steer equipment, $15,000. Social Services, net of federal and state revenue, $388,346. The net local increase of $61,523. Highlands Community Policy and Management Team, net of federal and state revenue, $468,137. Net local, a little over, or almost $86,000. Bristol, Virginia Public Schools, transfers, operating fund of $754,000. Virginia Highlands Community College, an increase of $29,221. Parks and Recreation Operations, heat and air system for the field house, $20,000. Parks and Recreation Operations, replace mowers and dump trailer of $24,500, and an increase for the public library of $49,747,000. As we continue through this, Planning and Community Development, professional services, $123,500. Planning and Community Development, the housing grant, $12,318. American Merchant carryover payment of $300,000. Economic Development for Euclid Center payment, that's $60,000. Discover Bristol, an increase of $76,000. Believe in Bristol, an increase of $19,500. Bristol, the BCM, $19,500 increase. Code compliance for city funded demolitions, $20,000. A contingency fund increase of $26,118. Debt, principal and interest increase of $41,943. Transfer to the Solid Waste Disposal Fund of $1.4 million. Transfer to Transit, $26,190. Transfer to the IDA for DRI 1, Phase 1 payment on the bonds of $800, or I'm sorry, $377,000. Transfer to state federal capital projects of $25,659. Transfer for local capital projects of $458,000, and an increase of fuel of $66,200. Total of $7.489 million. Sheriff's decrease other than salaries and benefits was $1.9 million, and the JASP decrease other than salaries and benefits, $101,820. Next, let's talk about the positions that were added in fiscal year 22 in the budget. These were approved by council. IT clerical staff, one. Police officer, one. A police officer, or police records clerk, one position. Police receptionist, one position. Increase of a firefighter by one position. Increase animal shelter part-time by half a position. Parks and Rec Programming Senior Center Supervisor of one position. The Assistant Payroll Clerk, one position. Solid Waste Disposal Fund Director of one position. Solid Waste Machine Equipment Operator of three positions, and a solid waste labor of one position. So in fiscal year 22, we increased the employee count by 12 and 1/2 positions. So in fiscal year 23, how do our positions look? With the elimination of the Judicial Alternative Sentencing Program, we'll lose three employees. The city sheriff and jail would lose 43 employees. The Office on Youth would lose half an employee, and non-city property maintenance would lose half an employee, for a total of 47 positions lost in fiscal year 23 budget. Additions to the fiscal year 23 budget would be a reclassification from the jail to the information technology of half. Some of you may remember that the sheriff's department funded half a position within IT to help cover IT costs. Now with the elimination of the jail, we would be taking that cost on to the general fund, so we would be funding that, and no longer would that come from the sheriff's department. A police captain of one position and a police dispatcher of one position, for a total of additions of two and 1/2 positions in fiscal year 23. These are the new positions that were requested but did not make it into the budget. The treasurer asked for a part-time employee to be increased to a full-time employee. The fire department asked for an assistant fire chief and seven additional firefighters. Inspections asked for one additional inspector. The sheriff's department asked for five additional employees. Streets and Engineering asked for two MEO-1s. Streets and Engineering also asked for a GIS technician of one. Fleet maintenance asked for two mechanics and a secretary. Maintenance of buildings for custodians, I requested two custodians. Community development planner, so a city planner did not make it into the budget this year. And the solid waste disposal fund asked for five laborers and an MEO-1, for a total of 29 and 1/2. Now, some of you may ask, you know, why are we not adding additional positions in solid waste at this point? And the reason is, we have several empty positions out there at this point, and until we get those positions full, I think it's hard to determine exactly how many positions are truly needed between now and June 30th. So salary increases. I talked a little bit ago, you would see a difference between the salaries of 1.3 million and 1.5 million that you see on this slide. The reason you see 1.549 million on this slide is simply because this here included raises for the sheriff's department for the remaining employees here. In the previous slide, that did not. And with benefits, you're looking at a total of little over $2 million for Fund 1 salary budget increases. City employees would receive a 5% raise. Compensation Board recommends 5%. And then there's a potential for an additional sheriff's department raise that's yet to be determined until the budget is finalized in Richmond. Police, I think this is important, it's something we've talked about in workshops. Certified starting officer pay right now, as they are certified, is $39,141. I'm recommending that be increased to $46,000 for an increase of $6,859, or 17 and 1/2%. Starting pay for a sergeant would increase to $63,902. Starting pay for a lieutenant would increase to $67,652, and starting pay for a captain would increase to $71,402. The fire department, that starting pay would increase from $33,307 to $36,722 for an increase of $3,415, which is roughly 10 and 1/4%. This includes a two-step raise for all employees of the fire department, except administration and battalion chiefs. Falls funding. Here is how we broke down the funding for the Falls in Phases 2 and 3. So your real property, we, it's $245,640. Personal property, $15,500. Local sales and use for Phases 2 and 3, $172,000. Restaurant meals tax, $155,000. Business license, $32,500. State sales tax, $200,000. Total increase of $820,640. This is a very important slide, these next three points. The Falls debt for this upcoming year is $3.138 million. Revenue sharing of $350,000, which is a budget deficit of $2.668 million. Many of the things that a lot of departments have asked for, and many of the things that council asked for, if the Falls was breaking even, we could fund those things with that So the jail. The payment to the jail for the upcoming fiscal year will be roughly $3.123 million. We have police transport costs of half a million. The sheriff's net budget of $902,000 for a total of $4.5 million. So in the fiscal year 22 budget, there was roughly $3 million allocated for the sheriff, and now we have a net increase of $1.449 million. This is less than what was projected by Davenport and Company by roughly $600,000. So the total payment is $3.123 million. 1.8 of that will come from Fund 1, and Fund 35, which is your ARPA funding, will come from, 1.3 million will come from that to cover this transition year with the regional jail. Financial policy ratios. Our policy goal for general obligation debt as a percentage of assessed value is 5%, and in fiscal year 23, we are projecting 8%. Debt as a percentage of operating expenditures per fund, general, the general fund is 8.2, the policy goal is 8%, and we are projecting 8.22%, and the solid waste disposal fund also has a policy goal of 8%, and it's at 38.3%. So 38% of the solid waste disposal fund is debt. The unassigned fund balance, the goal, the policy goal is 18%, and the actual for fiscal year 21, we were at 35.97%, roughly 17% over goal. Solid Waste Disposal Fund, I'm not recommending a fee increase in fiscal year 23. Disposal revenue will increase by $9,300. The collection revenue will decrease by $96,000. A non-operating revenue increase of $1.398 million for a total fund increase of $1.311 million. The general fund transfer for this is $1.41 million. If you'll take a moment and go back and look at the red line there on the bottom of $2.6 million with, whoops, $1.4 million general fund transfer, that's a significant amount of money that the city does not have in order to fund things that are necessary throughout the city. So significant expenditure increases in the solid waste disposal fund, the 5% salary increase in fiscal year 22 added positions, it's $301,000. Benefit increase of $167,000. Benefit increase of $167,000. Professional services increased by $376,000. Maintenance of machinery and equipment increased by $80,000. Leases for equipment increased by $80,000, or I'm sorry, $97,580. Material for building and property, an increase of $255,000. Fuel, an increase of $70,000. Repair parts for equipment, $20,000. And debt payments increased by $458,000. We decreased the liner accrual by $488,000. And a decrease in other equipment by $42,074. Locally funded capital projects, IT vehicle rotation of $35,000. Police vehicle rotation of $320,000. Personal protective equipment for the fire department of $50,000. The sheriff vehicle rotation of $50,000. And then general fleet maintenance for the city, a vehicle rotation of $75,000. Maintenance of municipal buildings and facilities improvement, an increase of $100,000 for a total of $630,000 for locally funded capital projects. State and federal funded capital projects. Lee Highway Exit 5, Phase 1B off of the off-ramps, federally funded of $2.5 million. State funded of $1.3 million. City, $26,000 for a total of $3.8 million. The Lee Highway Shared Use Path, Overhill to Clover, federally funded by $25,000. And there is no other funding necessary for that for this year. Goodson Street Bridge replacement of $576,000, all federally funded. Miscellaneous street and drainage improvements of $20,000, that's all city funded. The state Piedmont pedestrian heads of $201,083, all federally funded. Bonham Road, Paulina Drive sidewalk, all federally funded of $121,000. Bonham Road Shared Use Path, Paulina to Suncrest, $631,300 funded by the federal government. $12,884 funded by the city, total of $644,000. Euclid Bob Morrison Signal with pedestrian head, $680,000 funded by the federal government. Martin Luther King Bridge Rehab, $275,000 funded by the federal government. Fairview Street Bridge improvements, $233,952, all funded by the federal government. Lee Highway Old Airport Intersection Improvement, $392,000, all federally funded. Oak Street Bridge, $200,000, all federally funded. The Lee Highway Shared Use Path, Overhill to Shipley, $24,000 federally funded, $6,000 city match. And the Lee Highway Euclid Roundabout, federally funded of $75,000. Next, Fund 35, which is our ARPA funding. Southwest Virginia Regional Jail, $1.319 million from ARPA funding. Liner mobilization for the landfill of $4 million. Benzene removal project for the landfill of $3.5 million leaves us a contingency of $1.2 million for our total of $10,039,230. So that's the budget presentation. And what's next? On Tuesday night, you all will set the tax rate. I am not recommending a tax rate increase this year. On April 17, the advertisement of the fiscal year '23 budget will be published. April 26, there'll be a public hearing and an appropriation ordinance, on the appropriation ordinance at the April 26 meeting. The first reading of the budget ordinance will occur on May the 10th. And then the second reading and the adoption of the budget would occur on May the 24th. So if you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer those.
Don't have any questions, but I did want to thank you and Ms. Bradlin, the department heads, for the work that goes into this. It's an awful lot of work to come up with a budget that's balanced. And you found a way to do it even in challenging times. And I appreciate that greatly. And it's a lot for us to digest and look at over the next few weeks. So thank you.
I will say, I will thank you. I will say it was one of the most challenge, it is the most challenging budget we've had in the five years that Tamara and I have worked together on a budget. This was, it was difficult.
I'll echo a lot of, you know, what Councilman Hartley said. Thank you to our CFO and to you for the work you put in on this. And everybody throughout the city who's contributed to this, to this budget. It's a whole lot to digest. You know, there's about 200 pages here, I would say. Saw a lot of stuff I like, you know, saw some stuff that, you know, we'll probably have questions on later. But, you know, you don't want to shoot from the hip until you know what's in the budget fully. So, so thank you very much for presenting this.
Thank you. I would encourage you all over the next several days to take a look at the budget book. As you look at line items below salaries and benefits, you can see throughout each one of those departments, there were not significant increases for those line items below salaries and benefits. Basically, our departments are working within the same budget that they had last year, which is unfortunate because there are things that are needed throughout the city that at some point, we're going to have to find a way to properly fund. It's just, we were not able to fund, fund those items like we would like. There are some increases throughout those line items, but they are not significant. And I would also, I know we're meeting two-on-twos next week with each one of you all. I would encourage you to look at the books between now and then, and then make sure you bring your books with you to those meetings next week.
Can you send us a copy of those slides?
Well, I have no questions myself. I just want to reiterate what they said. Thank you for all your work. A lot to digest over the next coming days and weeks. Yeah, overall, I'm optimistic. I just wanted to say, you know, through all the challenges we face, I do believe we're heading in the right direction overall. Issues in the past, obviously, we went through COVID, expenses with the landfill, capital needs, like our equipment, personnel needs, like pay. But yeah, I mean, I think we've seen, we're recovering from COVID. When we look at our meals and lodging tax, we do have expenses with the landfill. But again, I'm optimistic that we're making progress. You know, big expenses with, with pay for our employees, but, but we need that. We need to attract new, but also retain the ones we've got. And obviously, the large economic development project in the former Bristol Mall is opening soon. So overall, I'm optimistic. That's, that's what I'll say. My initial thoughts. But a lot to digest and a lot of information tonight. So thank you all.
Thank you.
If, if there's no other questions, this was the only item of our agenda tonight. So if there's no further business, we stand adjourned.